Going to open council time for Wednesday, January 26, 2022. And we are going to actually, the council needs to amend the agenda for the executive session to add one additional executive session for one additional potential litigation for five minutes with no objections. And the council will now meet in executive session with legal counsel about RCW 4032, 110, 1I. For one potential litigation for 15 minutes, one potential litigation for five minutes. The council will be in executive session for 20 minutes, returning at 10:50, 10:50, and not expected to take any action following the executive session. So I'll see you on the other side, councilors.
The council has extended executive session for 10 more minutes and will be returning at 11:00 a.m.
And out of executive session, so we will begin our agenda, which deals with old business and the minutes of our January 19 meeting. I would also like to mention, these minutes also indicate, as I mentioned at the Board of Health, that the council convened in a hearing room, in hearing room 680 on the sixth floor, Public Services Center, et cetera, et cetera. And I really believe, I know our staff was there, because if you watch CCTV or whatever you were watching, they are there and during our hearings. We are not, though, we are meeting remotely, and I think that should be noted in the minutes. So I would amend the minutes in that way and ask that they be amended, unless there's a problem with that, Kathleen, I, yeah. So we'll amend those minutes. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the amended minutes in a second.
Motion to approve the amended minutes.
It was moved and seconded to approve the amended minutes for January 19, 2022. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 1.2, February 1, public hearing process.
Good morning, council. And so as you know, we're doing a public hearing on February 1st for the mini-initiative that has come forward. The question before you, I just lost you on my screen, there you are. Okay, the question before you is, it's my understanding that Rob Anderson was the leader for this mini-initiative in the community and that there has been a request to allow Mr. Anderson a specified amount of time to present information regarding the mini-initiative at the public hearing. So I wanted to put that before the council to see if that is your desire to allow that or just move forward with the information that you've received in the mini-initiative.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Medvedjev.
Yeah, so I think this is a first for us under the charter, at least that I've seen. And I can't imagine a process that wouldn't allow time for the proponent to present it. I think it should be limited in time. It could allow questions by us of the proponent, but I think there should be an allocation of time for a fair presentation.
I would, I guess, concur with that, but I would like to see that time be a three-minute time, which is not different from testimony. We have received written documentation that we've probably all read many times. And my concern is that with a very lengthy presentation, I don't know what others may be envisioned as the timeframe, it very quickly becomes so repetitive, much like the testimony that we're receiving in written form. So my suggestion would be to have Mr. Anderson speak first and to allocate three minutes.
I would, I was actually thinking more on the line of 10 minutes, as he was the person that gathered all of these signatures. And I don't think he's going to be give, my envision, I envision what the proponent would say is sort of like the who, what, when, where, why kind of thing, and not necessarily give the kind of testimony that you're talking about or that we're receiving in written form. I think it will be more on the order of what, for instance, well, I would say when we have, when we have attorneys present, for outside attorneys present, for instance, on dockets and annual reports or whatever, where they give reasoning behind or why they are proponent and maybe how it came about. So I would ask that we give him, and it is historical. It is historical, it never has happened, so, under our charter. So I would just ask that it be at least 10 minutes.
And yeah. Julie, once again, not, not going to be on this session? She's not signing in? Okay. I would concur with 10. I think three minutes is just too rushed. We're still going to have public comment, which should be limited to three minutes. And we'll need to discuss whether that goes on for hours or days or gets limited in time as well, what we're going to anticipate in the way of public comment. You know, I've heard, well, we know that how many signed the petition. I've heard now numbers of 50,000 that are behind this petition. I don't know where that comes from, but I think the bigger issue is going to be the length of the public comment period.
And, and I think that, go ahead, Temple.
I, I agree with Counselor Medvedjev that since this is the first time under this charter, we should set the process. I, so I think that the presenter of the initiative, the mini-initiative, should speak. I, I also feel that, and this is not about the specific initiative, but in general, that if your document can't speak for itself, then that's, that's a problem in and of itself. And so having an extended amount of time to explain it, it should be able to speak for itself and do the work. So I, but the opportunity for the council to ask questions and to get clarification on things that might not be fully clear, I think is a good opportunity. So I'd actually propose something that's a little bit of a hybrid of the two, the two proposals that have come forward, which is five minutes to present and then say five minutes worth of question and answer, something like that, to allow for both the presentation of the position and formally being able to express, but then also the opportunity to get a little bit more detailed information.
I would think that we should, we would be asking questions throughout if they came up. And, and I would envision either the gather, the organizer, gather, author, whatever, to answer those questions or his attorney or, or whatever to, I'm not going to limit our questions. And so I wouldn't see that it's going to be five and five or anything like that. I think that we can ask as many questions as we have.
Hold that in mind, then, I'd be supportive of five minutes, not 10.
And can I draw your attention to the chat? There's actually an interesting comment that there should be time for an opposition.
Well, of course. You mean an opposing stance? They're going to have opportunity to, to get public testimony.
Okay, well, I think they're talking in context of someone presenting and then someone opposing. And if we do go down that road, which sounds fair, I would want to limit each to five minutes. And, because we're going to have, we're going to be really pressed for time throughout this entire proceeding, I anticipate.
I'm, I just want to make sure that we're doing the, the board's desires. So, and I did have as a second agenda item under this topic to talk about the written public comment that we received as well as public testimony and how you may want to consider, or if you want to consider changing that at all. So it's, so how, how long would you like, Mr., I haven't heard three votes for the length of time Mr. Anderson to provide his information.
So we've got 10, three, and five.
So are we going to allow time? And how do we select if there is an opposition?
I don't, I don't, since this wasn't, for instance, it wasn't a, it wasn't something on the voter's pamphlet where we would have an opposition statement. I, I mean, I guess there could be an opposition statement, but it really needs to stick to everything that's in the, that's in the mini-initiative. It would, it would have to be very organized in the sense that it's responding to the very initiative. And I, I'm not sure that the person that was on that chat is qualified. So what's your, you want five, 10, or three?
Well, since we're, I think we're, I mean, we're in uncharted territory. We don't have a process in place to, and we did not have it, that I recall, an op, well, there was no mechanism for the mini-initiative in the voter's pamphlet. So we, so if we're ignoring the opposition possibility, other than in public comment, obviously people can make a statement in opposition during public comment, I would concur with five minutes, anticipating that we're going to have a lot of public comments.
I, I concur with, with the five minutes, too. That is a, a, a good way to acknowledge, I think, the effort that was made in getting the initiative forward. It's time-consuming and so on to do that, and it acknowledges that. I, I just hope that he and others who follow, because there's likely to be scores of input on this, really avoid repetitiveness. I, I found it ironic this morning when I looked at my laptop that it was categorizing the inputs on this initiative now in my junk mail. And so it has hundreds of them, I suppose. I don't know how many are in there. I, I haven't even had a chance to see yet, because I didn't know the computer was sending them off to that. And I say that only because there's a danger that we start to tune out from oral messages, too, if they become too repetitive. So let's just find a way not to go there. And I don't know if Mr. Anderson is, is listening to this dialogue or not, but perhaps he could help in that by his own example.
I think that when we get to, I mean, this, there is kind of a motion on the floor, I guess, or, or at least the discussion. Gary, was that a motion? Are we waiting for a second for that, a five-minute?
I'll make the motion for five minutes.
A second? Yeah. Okay, it's been moved and seconded for five minutes to allow Mr. Anderson to present the mini-initiative. And so now we are discussing that particular point. I will probably vote against this, because I do think he needs more time, regardless of how many people that are going to speak and et cetera. But that said, that's part of my, I will be voting no, only because I want him to have more time, not less. Any other, any other comments? Hearing and seeing, and all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? No. No. So moving on to the other issue of the public comment and the amount of time that we want to give to the testimony that will, that may come before us. I was going to, and I wanted this to be in a public meeting for sure, because I, I would ask that what we do, instead of the three-minute time to be able to give testimony, that we allow two minutes per person for the testimony and that we ask, I will ask at the very beginning that we have the least amount of repetition as we possibly can, so that we can get different perspectives, because I think other people have their own separate stories. And, and I think that we, it's important that we hear that. And we can have the, any, any opposition as well, testifying against this. Same thing will go for those that, that appear for that as well. We would ask that it's not repetitive and, and then limit, I would say we limit the testimony maybe to two hours. If it doesn't take that long, great, we'll, we'll be able to move forward with it. But I, there are a lot of people who want to talk, and by at least eliminating one minute per person, that's going to help get more people in. But in order for us to, to continue listening and hearing what people are testifying, I think it's probably best to keep it at about two hours of public testimony.
And Chair O'Brien, if I may, just another, for your thought or consideration is that we do have written testimony as well. And what we've been doing since we've been remote is having staff read the written testimony. So if that might be something you want to consider as well, putting a timeframe on either the number, the time, or whatever, with regards to that as well versus the public.
And what we have also dealt, what we've asked staff to do is to kind of compile real similar testimony and, or, or choose like the top 10 or something and, you know, limit it to the top 10 on each side. I, I don't know how, what the council thinks about that, but we have done that in the past. And I think it's helpful. I hate shutting anybody out, but, but reading all of that testimony would be very difficult. So I think that what we need to, it does leave it to staff to try to really make some very careful decisions about what they see as, as compelling or, or not, or whatever. I mean, you know, and, and there, I, I think it'll be pretty clear whether they're opposed or for. So that'll be helpful, but I, I'd take any input from the council with regard to that.
I think these are all good suggestions. And to kind of summarize it to our limit, to our, our two, two-minute limitation per individual and to read 10 that appear not to be repetitive on each side of the written comments.
Okay.
I want to add, oh, go ahead.
Um, I would like to ask for process that was, that was seen in the, the hearing on the, the wrestling thing, where when folks reached their time, they were, they were given the notice that they reached time, and then the mic was turned off. And that will help with, avoid with the folks going over and, and dragging it. Like, if we're going to try to get, you know, two hours is about 60 people. So if we're going to actually try to get those folks in, then being able to move quickly between testimonies would help actually make that happen.
I don't, actually, what we did, Temple, was when they started talking about something they were asked not to testify on, that's when their mic was shut off, not when they're tended. So it was, we asked them.
Believe I saw otherwise, too, but I would recommend that that happen. Because it prevents, it prevents staff having to talk over people. It prevents slowdowns. And if everybody knows that's going to be the case in the beginning, then it's not a surprise.
So if I may, I concur with that last bit. I wish we did have more control of the mic when people continue to exceed and talk over staff. And just, I just want to make one more point. And they, it's unfair to everyone else that stays within the time limit. We have to be really careful not to sanitize and filter out people that want to speak. But I, I do agree with the two-hour limit. I do agree with the two-minute per caller. As to the further comment in the chat regarding an opposition, you know, I, I think we just don't have the structure that a voter's pamphlet would to solicit opposition statements. So the time will be available, two minutes per person for points in opposition to me, to be made. I'm trying to recall what happened when we were flooded with fireworks. At some point, I think Kathleen, that staff and I, sorry to put so much of a burden on staff, but at some point, there was a count. You know, hey, there were so many in favor of, in this case, a mini-initiative, and so many not in favor, just a raw count besides the, the random 10 on each side that would be part of the process. So those are my comments.
Other comments? I did, did we have a motion? I don't recall, I think we did pass the motion for the two-minute, two-hour thing. Is that right?
Not yet, but I'll.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right.
Occasionally, we were going to get, have a raw count, and I see it in the chat as well. Someone just kind of also commented on that.
Wow. I know what we're asking for now. Thanks. We're asking for lots of junk mail and mail, because we're going to have competing, compete testimony now. So, so be it, this is the public town square. So I do think that we should know the, the, the scale, though. I, I would agree, Counselor Medvedjev, that we do, it's not just that we have 10 of this and 10 of that. I think, actually, I think before, we took sort of a, a percentage. I mean, but, but I'd have to look back at that process. It was not, I don't think it was 10 for 10. I think it was for, for every so many, there were some chosen. But I would have to look back at that. Okay, are we, are we finished with this discussion? I think we're finished.
Did we agree that the microphone would be turned off?
We didn't.
So it's.
To that effect? Do it, do it with a little bit of thought process there when you do it.
With advanced notice to our public that that is going to be the case, I really support that.
And I'm going to take that as a motion.
And I, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to cut the mic off, have the staff cut the mic off when two minutes are complete from testimony. Further discussion? I guess I was, I, I really think this is, this is, one, a little unkind. And I know you think it's not, it's more fair, it makes it more fair, but I, I actually don't. But I, it was, it was actually a very hard process to, to see and be a part of these microphones being cut off when people were trying to give testimony on what they were asked not to testify on. So, but it, it's a function and.
Well, Madam Chair, so I'd like to say, I've been in meetings where I thought it was unkind, where there was like one public comment and the chair, not you, but a different meeting, a different chair, would cut them off when there was only one comment. When we have potentially hundreds of comments, it is really kind to cut them off. So I, I think it is a much more fair process to limit it to two minutes and mean it and have to silence, it's easier on the staff to not have to talk over people or constantly remind, and it's fair to other people who did stay within the two minutes. So I think it is a much more fair process to do it.
And also, Chair, with this, we hopefully would be able to get in pretty close to 60 comments, which is a good selection of what people are thinking. And it doesn't allow them to cover everything that they think about the issue, but hopefully their most, most important couple of points, at least.
Okay, Counselor Lance, were you going to say something earlier? I thought.
No, I, I agree with what Medvedjev and Bowerman have just said. And I think that if it's not delivered harshly and if folks are aware that that's going to be the case, then it is, it's fair, it's equitable, and it allows more people to have more comment, which is, you know, part of operating in a society together is learning how to accommodate others.
Okay. All in favor of the motion that's been moved and seconded to cut the mic off at the end of two minutes of testimony, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number 1.3, the jail process.
Thank you, councilors. So if you remember, prior to COVID, there was a lot of work done with the CFAT Committee, our Corrections Facility Advisory Commission, as well as other reports and studies on the jail. You know, the condition of the jail, the number of beds, is it conducive to the type of services that we want to provide to the individuals who will be in the jail? And then COVID hit, and there was policy decisions that were made at the time between the prosecuting attorney's office, the sheriff, and the courts to decide who would be maintained in the jail or who would be out on release. And there's also other services that have come into effect as well with regards to like tracking systems and probation that's going through the courts. So now that we're almost two years into COVID, just shy of two years, some of our community members did put together a very effective town hall that was about a week and a half or two weeks ago now, that included almost 300 people who called in and participated to listen to concerns regarding property crimes in the neighborhoods and what needs to be done. And so I, I see two parts to this. One is that policy decision with the Law and Justice Group, with the courts, the prosecuting attorney and the sheriff again. And then we have the facility, which is under the jurisdiction of the council, and if, how we want to move forward with that. What is in front of you today is just a draft document, helping to organize my thoughts a little bit. I have met with the, the leaders of the town hall, just to get their feedback and input. What I did here on the first page that you can see is linked to all of the work that's been done. And I don't want to undermine at all, there was a lot of work done from these commissions. So the first one is the CFAT Committee that worked until September 4th, which is when they presented a final report with some pertinent data for the council's consideration. And so I put the links to the actual reports, as well as the work session, both for your ease and our community's ease of access as well. And then also, as we look forward, how we move forward, possibly using this to help educate any process moving forward. I did also link on here the Law and Justice Space Needs Report that was done by the Sheriff's Office in 2008. I understand there might be another report between 2008 and the CFAT Committee. I'm still trying to locate that, and we'll add that to this list. The other documents on here related to the jail studies, all of this is online. There's a link to where our community can go to to see all of these documents. And I've also split out in the categories that it is on the website, which is the master plan, the finance, diversion and services, and organization and work programs. There is other information. There is other information too that I'm gathering that are not included online right now. Some of it is the policy decisions that were made by the Law and Justice Partners, as well as some of the additional finance, financial information for like bonds and working with our bond counsel. Obviously this was a couple of years ago, so some of this information will need to be updated as we move forward. Steph, if you could scroll down to the next page, please. So this is just a consideration for the council to consider. Now, again, we're, you know, the Law and Justice Group is going to need to review those policies to see, you know, who should be tried in going into our jail. The recommendation that I'm asking for the council today and recommendation or feedback, if you need additional information or questions before, I'm certainly at your service to work towards this. But just brainstorming with the, the individuals that led the town hall and others looking at maybe forming two groups, smaller in nature. And these groups are really the individuals with the expertise to review the data. It's already been done in order to provide a recommendation to the council on how to move forward with the jail, which is continue as is, remodel or build a new jail. The two groups would be, the experts would be under the needs such as the sheriff, the law enforcement representing the cities, prosecuting attorney, the courts and community services and public health. And then you have the financial side and a lot of the needs conversations, obviously will go into the financial part of the conversation as well. This could include our finance team, the building industry. They might be able to provide great expertise on how can we do this more efficient with, you know, the rise in building costs, a business representative and then possibly a member of the Clark County Alliance on Public Safety Liaison, which is the, the individuals who actually coordinated the town hall. And of course, this is just brainstorming right now. And I'm certainly open to feedback if there's other areas that we're missing on these two groups. The purpose again, you know, really is to review the work that has already been done. There's been a lot of work done. And then the, these groups would evaluate and determine different criteria. For example, like mental health services, what types of special needs do we need to make sure that's in the jail? Operational needs to maximize the efficiency. This is everything from the staffing levels, the type of supervision, the layout of the jail, the number of beds that they can have, the types of beds, where are they located? Evaluate and determine projected one-time and ongoing revenue and expenses. That is a, a huge item. You know, one-time capital for building or remodeling. And then what's the ongoing operational? Where can we tap into these resources? The state, the federal government? Do we need to go out for a vote? What does council have authority for? Federal grants, you know, so really analyzing, looking at all of the funding that's available. And then finally, the groups would provide a summary to the council with a recommendation on how to move forward for your consideration. The timing of this group, jail hasn't gotten any better, the physical jail. So I do know, at least from prior conversations with the council, I don't think there's been any disagreement on that. It's just a matter of how do we fix it and what's the appropriate steps? We like to start getting this group together as soon as possible. They'll be provided with all the historical information that I have on the first page. I would hope that, and recommend to the council that you get provided weekly updates at council time, even if it's just a five, 10 minute update from them, so that you can see the progress as they move forward. And then hopefully maybe have a target for the committees to provide recommendations to the council by the end of March. That is a, a very fast timeframe and we, I do have to recognize, you know, we saw COVID. These individuals have other jobs and responsibilities. So, you know, putting some flexibility in there, but also making it a priority in the community. And again, just for other considerations, as I mentioned earlier, Law and Justice, we will need an understanding and this group will need an understanding of the policing policies that have been established by the Law and Justice Group, as well as other cities and how that could impact who is coming into the jail, the revenue, and to make sure we have the right services. So we really need to understand where that is going in order to make sure that we're responding appropriate, appropriately. So with that said, the recommendation again, in front of the council today is to start moving forward with this, or I can certainly answer any questions or come back next week if there's questions I don't have answers to today. So I will leave, turn that over to you as well.
Are there questions first?
Madam Chair, I have some. So I just resent, I thought I had sent it after our one-on-one on Monday. I think the report, the consultant that the sheriff had hired back in 2014, I just resent that to everyone. Because there was, I believe, some remodel suggestions there. We, we need to do something we got behind because of the pandemic. I, I want to point out too that, you know, by Law and Justice, I mean, we have a Law and Justice Committee. And in fact, in the next meeting, they're going to be taking up some jail issues. Tony Golick is going to chair that meeting in my absence. But I want to highlight that that's different than what has happened over the last couple of years between the courts, the PA and the sheriff on deciding internal policies during, as a result of the pandemic, they came up with a plan to basically empty the jail. And that, we had no role in that, we had no participation in that. And I'm not saying that we should. I mean, it is the justice partners, the main stakeholders that did that, working collaboratively together. So that was something they did. You know, it's not so much that the jail is beyond capacity now, but COVID forced because of distancing and safety, health and safety issues, they needed to eliminate the population or get it down as much as they could within public safety requirements. So I did want to highlight that that, that meeting is coming up with the Law and Justice Sitting Committee that has many of the stakeholders involved. And I, I won't be able to participate in that meeting, but I look forward to listening to it. So I'm all in favor of this initiative because we do need to move forward. We do need to come up with real substantial next steps to improve the conditions at the jail. And it's, and it's efficiency from receiving on. There are some real defects noted in our local jail, not just because of age, but because of the design that they're currently living under.
Other questions or comments?
Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Lance.
Kathleen, thanks for this and I appreciate it and I'm glad it's moving forward. Looking at your list of potential example members of the committees, are you looking for feedback on that right now?
Absolutely. Yes.
I think it's good. I, looking at the list of folks who are involved in the CFAC, which was of course much larger and we don't want it to grow exponentially. But I feel like there is one set of needs missing from the needs list, which is specifically disability rights Washington, I think, could speak very well to some of the needs of those who find themselves in jail and also help us make sure that decisions that are made don't get us in further trouble down the line and that we're following all proper protocols to make sure that folks are treated and housed the way they need to be. I think that could be additional insight in combination with our community services and public health staff to ensure that that side of things is covered.
Chair, just a comment.
Councilwoman.
I think that's a, a great idea, Councilor Lance, and that should be added to the list. I would just like to acknowledge that what you have on page one, Kathleen, is really excellent. I know that putting together that list was no easy task because sometimes those huge reports get a bit buried. And this has uncovered them in a very appropriate way because they certainly should not be covered up. They're, they're amazing. And most of this was done before my time as a counselor and I've just reviewed it within the last month. And I'm really overwhelmed by the quality and quantity of work that, that was done. I'd also like to thank three particular people in the community and that's Ann Donnelly, Michelle Rudy and Jim Mans, who really got that town hall going and got the impetus for this going. I don't know if you need a motion to get these two groups underway, but if you do, I, I would so move because that seems to be the way to get the ball rolling and get it, and get it started in a, an official way. And I love the idea of their reporting back week later to the council so that we are a part of the discussion at all times.
So I believe that was a motion.
It was a long-winded one, yes.
Is there a second?
I'm unclear. Karen, are you suggesting Ann Donnelly's group be added?
No, I'm saying the, under number one on, on this page that's before us now, committee members with specific expertise. One group that focuses on jail needs and another group that focuses on how would those needs be financed? And because those two groups really have, bring a little bit different expertise to the table and not combining them into one humongous group that tends to get buried down with time. But instead to have it as two separate groups that are in good communication with each other seems to be the, the, the better and more efficient way to go. So I, I agree with this proposal that's on, on paper before us.
I do see, I do see just a slight problem as you've articulated this. And that is if the financial group is going to respond to the needs group, we are not going to have ongoing meetings or, or meetings at the same time or, you know. So I, I don't know how that's going to be handled. If they're just responding to that or are they using the documentation, what's already been done? I'm assuming that because we have this huge list and many reports of what has been already produced for us, and, and probably, you know, what, what Councilman Medvedji was saying about some of the things that have taken place since COVID, you know, taking that into account as well. I would think that there's a lot of information for them both to get started. But Kathleen, how do you see this actually working simultaneously or?
Absolutely. So first up, with the policy, the policing policies, I will reach out to the, the electeds who made those decisions prior to COVID and see if they're still reviewing those or updating them and ensure that that communication is coming as well. But this, this committee could be together, they're just coming with specific lenses. And it could be that the needs group is, you know, brainstorming of this is what we need in the jail. This is the number of beds, this type of services and the financial resources are there. And then they can start doing their work to go and look at how much would this cost for building? How would it cost, you know, for, who do we need to connect within the community to make sure that they're back? So they are really working together, just their area of expertise is coming from a different lens.
That helps. I, I do think they should work together. It sounds like a really huge group and, and that can cause problems sometimes too. However, I did, we do need, we do need the number to basically get it, get us a really broad view. I just want to also compliment you on the idea of a weekly report, which should be not really so so detailed that it's burdensome to the committee and staff that puts it together. However, we should have the reports. And most of all, I like the time limit because we saw what happened with CFAC and it went way too long. It went way past the time when it was expected to finish and basically didn't. They couldn't come to an agreement for a recommendation. So at least that I recall, whatever. The idea that we really should have a time limit on this was very appealing to me as well. Hopefully they can get their work done and it's, it's going to be tough because there are a lot of people on this committee and they do have jobs. But I would agree that we should try, we should reach. We should reach for the moon and be falling stars.
I want to comment on what Kathleen said because I think it's important that, and I, not being disparaging here, but bean counters should be part of this process. That was part of the problem with CFAC. I mean, they, they were divorced from money constraints. And so, you know, most of what they evaluated for that year were going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars and not be feasible. So I, we really need to get down into the weeds quickly and pragmatically because we want to have some next steps that we can actually initiate. So we can come up with a plan. What do we need immediately? How do we transition while part of the jail is being remodeled? You know, what needs to be remodeled? You know, we, and we need to know that it's physically prudent and feasible. And for those portions that are going to take a bond, if that's it, or if there's ARPA money available to pay for some of it. I mean, we need the money, those that can inform us about money availability, they need to be part of this process right now.
Okay, so we, we actually had a motion on the floor then. It was not seconded yet because we kind of started a discussion to clarify before there was a second. And Karen, can you, basically it's, it's putting these two groups, the needs and the financial people together to meet and including the community rights. What was the name of it, Temple? Community Rights?
Disability Rights Washington.
Oh, disability rights, okay, Washington. Adding them because I'm sure that they, they actually will have real good input. So putting those two groups together, having them report weekly and try to be finished with their job by March the 20th. Is there a second?
I will second that with my thanks to Kathleen for putting it together.
Yes. It's been moved and seconded to do as was just stated. All in favor or is there further discussion? You're muted?
I'm going back and forth on mute, not mute with staff down here. Thank you, staff. Is it March 20 or March 30?
Did I say 20?
I believe so. That's what I heard. So March 30, yeah, good.
March 30, yes. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to new business. 2.1, possible road dedication of Southeast 356th Avenue.
Yes, Counselor, so this one is the one that Jamie Housley and Steve Hornstein brought forward and wanting to share their perspective on a possible road dedication on Southeast 356th Avenue, which is by Washougal Pitt. So the council did agree to allow them to come to the council and present their opinion on this. This is not an actionable item today, it's just for council's information. So with that said, I know that Jamie Housley is on and it looks like Steve Hornstein made it. I, I wasn't sure if he was going to be able to make it and his colleagues. So I'll turn it over to them now. Thank you.
Well, good, I'm Mr. afternoon, councilors. I'm really just here to answer any questions you may have. And just again, sort of reiterate, which I do think county legal has the same opinion that the county board of commissioners has the authority to accept by right a dedication from a property owner of a road. Basically, you need three elements here. You need an offer of that. There, there should be some public use of that, which could be, you know, authorizing the public to travel on the roadway. And then you need some sort of acceptance of that. And that can come in various manners, whether expressed or implied. And here I think the, the request would be to seek some sort of express acceptance of that through some formal documentation with the county council.
Are there questions of, of Mr. Housley? Are there questions of Mr. Housley?
Well, I do, Madam Chair. If you could tell us what that solves regarding decibel levels and also whether SEPA is then comes into play.
Counselor, I don't want to wade into the specifics of the present land use application too much, other than to say, just for our belief that if the county does accept the road dedication, we first of all, I disagree with staff about the, I guess, some of the WAC standards. But regardless of that, if the roadway becomes a publicly dedicated roadway and the county accepts that, from my perspective, that changes what the county's legal position should be. And of course, that's going to be adjudicated in front of a hearings examiner in a separate process. And that's really not before the council here.
Can you tell us how long this road is? How many people residences are on this road? At the at the point, you know, where you're seeking the public dedication of it?
Yeah, let me maybe give you some facts about the road. The road itself has existed since prior to 1972. It was used to basically access the what used to be a farm where the current aggregate operation is. And when the construction of SR 14 was being done, this was the primary source of that aggregate. And this became a mine effectively through a DNR permit in 1972. So that that road has been used as a mining haul road since that point in time. There are about, I believe, 11 residences along the roadway. I may be mistaken about that. It may be fewer than that, actually, that utilize the road. And they utilize that through an easement that our client's predecessor had given to those those property owners along there. We do own or our client, I should say, owns the road in fee. Most of the houses that are also located upon there came into existence well after the operation of the mine. I believe that there is only one, maybe two houses that preexisted.
Do you know the length of the road?
Well, it's interesting you could add that. I was looking at the county road standard today. And typically, in rural areas, especially the county, you can't have a cul-de-sac, for instance, when something is more than 150 feet. The county usually requires some sort of longer rural access road. So this clearly exceeds this. You know, I want to say that we're looking at definitely not a mile, definitely not a quarter mile, somewhere in between. It I guess it depends on how far into the mine you want to talk.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or?
Question. What is the feeling about the applicability of that Section 3G of SEPA? We were told that at one time that it's uniquely Clark County that has that applicability, if I'm not mistaken there. Why is that pulled in for Clark County? And is that something that is beneficial? Should it be changed or what's the situation?
I don't really know the history of that, Counselor. I think that that's a good question. I do think that obviously it is in county code. So that is a unique thing to Clark County. I don't think it necessarily needs to be there. I mean, I guess there's nothing from there's not a mandated requirement from this date.
It's through our own code.
Through your own code, yes, through your own legislative actions. I don't I don't know the history of it.
Other questions or discussion? Okay. If you have nothing else for us, Mr. Housley, that I guess that maybe covers it unless anybody has any other questions before we let him go.
No, I think just the request would be, you know, we would like to move forward with a public hearing. And obviously, they're assuming that the other side would have their presentation. We would we would detail more at that time. I want to be a little succinct here and just focus it on the question of whether or not the county council has the authority to accept a road dedication. And, you know, clearly you do by state law.
Yes, understood. Okay, is that while you? It looks like that's it, Jamie. So we will or Mr. Housley, excuse me. I guess we we will consider that request and
Thank you.
and let you know.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Kathleen, were we to take we weren't to take any action? Okay. Okay, so moving on then to under new business 2.2, the SFMG master planning. This is the fair, the fair, right?
Yes, so this is what the fair site management group. It is their time to start looking at master planning for the fairgrounds. And they have selected a consultant to help them with that process. It's within their budget. And they're extending an invitation to any counselor who wants to have any conversation with them to get feedback or hear about what's going on in the process. So this is just if you are interested in having any conversations, please let me know so that we can get it scheduled with your calendars. So either you can let me know or you can send me an email later today as well. But they are moving forward now. And so they would like to have conversations sooner than later.
Okay, so those are our marching orders for that particular item. And I see actually we go from 2.2 to 2.4. I don't know what happened to 2.3. So that's a typo. Well, just pretend there's no we've held 2.3, which does not exist, and move to 2.4. Point.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Berman.
I move that we remove item 2.4 from our agenda for the reason that the complaint does not is charging ethics violation that does not comport with a definition of an ethics violation. And I'd like a moment to explain that either now or in a moment or two.
That was a motion. Do we have? I'll second it. Go ahead, Counselor Berman and.
The reason that I I say it does not comport with the definition of an ethics violation, there is an exhibit one in the drafted Code of Ethical Conduct and Professional Conduct, which I personally find consistent with other environments in which I've used the terminology for ethics codes. And I've had familiarity with a number of them, including in the accounting field, for example, where it's very specific. But as an example, the Code of Ethical Conduct states, this includes but is not limited to prohibiting elected and county officials, county employees from using his or her position to secure special privileges or exemptions for himself, herself, or others. Nothing to that effect is is charged in this particular case, nor is it applicable. It goes further to state that elected officials and county officials should neither seek nor accept any favor from any source that may be offered to influence decision making. And again, same thing, that is neither charged nor applicable in this situation, which is in part what leads me to conclude that this should be removed from the agenda because it is simply not consistent with what is deemed to be an ethics violation.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I wanted to add, if people are listening or thank you. The, you know, we just had charter amendments that also called for reform of the process. And at the same time, we had last year suspended the process because it was unworkable as it presently was written. So now we have, in addition to that work that was already going on, work by the executive on reforming the process. And we don't have it in place yet. We haven't been able to address it. But nevertheless, I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Berman that this complaint and another recently made just don't come close to speaking to an ethics violation worthy of any kind of further investigation or discussion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to counselor reports. Do we have counselor reports?
Chair.
Counselor Lent. Yes, last week, I'm looking for my notes. The RDPO, the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization, did meet. And as with many of the RDPO meetings, there was a lot of great information and good work being done. And because it is about our security and safety and emergencies, it's always also a little bit terrifying. But the bulk of the conversation was around cybersecurity and continued also around continued preparation for additional wildfire, especially in the wildland urban interface. So there's a lot of really good work being done on the cybersecurity front. I'll say a lot of it is work that I don't understand. And that's why we have professionals doing a lot of this work. But there is definitely a heightened. It's the attention to cybersecurity is definitely at all levels of government and thinking about not just how do we secure our governments, but how do we keep our people, our constituents, safe and informed about how to protect themselves from online threats? So there is some good work being done there. And then also, there continues to be really good work on a five-county basis around continuing to make us more prepared for the growing wildfire threat that we see every year. And the five counties represented in RDPO are four Oregon counties and then also Clark County. They work very closely in alliance. Our folks at Cressa work a lot with RDPO and the folks at the emergency agencies for all of the other counties. And there is there's federal funding that is being pursued to help bolster our resources. But there's also a study that is being undertaken to really carefully define the needs in our communities so that rather than simply saying, oh, we need more and treating it on sort of a as things come up basis, they're really taking an extensive look at the gaps in our ability to provide service and then moving from there to make targeted requests for funding and more resources. At the same time, they recognize this is a problem we have right now. So there is work being done to address specific needs now. One of the very cool things that is underway is work on getting funding for 5,000. Oh, my goodness, I just I lost my note. One-mile fire hoses. So it's basically a truck with a fire hose. It's a mile long that can be stationed in a county in a place where you think you might need it. And so if you are going to be going out and fighting a fire where we don't have as many of our water resources, you're able to connect to that and take the water to where the fire is much more quickly and efficiently. And also because they are on trucks, right now, they have the funding and are acquiring three of them, but they're aiming for five, so one in each of the five counties in RDPO. And if, say, there is a county that has much higher fire danger at a specific time, because these hoses are on trucks, they can move and bring aid to the other counties who are in our RDPO association. So it it helps us specifically. And also by helping the other counties working together, we're all helping each other. So there's really our emergency agencies have really recognized that this ongoing fire threat is something to take very seriously. They are, they have been. And I'm really happy to see the long range and short range work that they're doing. Sorry, that was a little longer than I intended, but I got really excited about the fire hose.
I mean, did you hear anything about the tsunami warning that took place last weekend in Seattle?
Yes, I think that this this meeting was actually not in like, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that was I was in Seattle and there was a warning. And we were in we were in the Skagit Valley driving that day. And all of a sudden, that warning came, tsunami warning. So for the shoreline there. Anyway, thank you for that report. Any other reports?
May I ask Counselor Lent a question about a point of discussion? So those of us who watch the aviation community and the firefighting ability provided by supertankers, that became quite an issue in Washington State because Washington State didn't validate the use of those supertankers that are available and used elsewhere in the country. Was there any discussion at all? I'm talking about aircraft, you know, basically 747 size aircraft that are fitted for fire suppression. Was there any discussion of fighting the fire from the air?
My understanding is there's been a lot of discussion about as many ways to fight the fire as possible. And that is one of the things with this with this ongoing study that's being done. And this work isn't done yet. So unfortunately, I don't have the final report to refer to. But this is all of our emergency professionals in the area working together to identify where and how we need more support to fight fires. And so being able to identify is our gap that we do need help from the air? Is our gap that we do need help here? And what those specifically are? So I know that's actually saying, no, I don't know the answer to that, but they are working on it. So and when we have that report, I'll definitely share it because I think it'll be really informative about not just what we need, but to help give context for understanding of how our emergency professionals think about their work and approach it.
Okay, any other counselor reports?
Yes, I have one. This is from CREDC, our Economic Development Group. They have submitted their end of year report. And we talked about that at the last executive meeting where they have stated that the industrial land inventory limitations in Clark County hindered their ability to respond to 13 larger scale RFIs, 11 of which sought buildable industrial sites greater than 20 acres. And that came to us because they they really wanted to build in Washington or at least consider Washington. But then, in the end, couldn't. In fact, we couldn't even respond for lack of the land available for building that met their requests. And this is because even though this enormous turn to remote jobs in the country overall, the majority of contacts with economic development in Clark County have interestingly been in the area of manufacturing. And so these were largely manufacturing firms that had an interest in developing here. But then we couldn't accommodate them.
It's not good.
Not good. It's jobs. Not good. It's jobs.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that report. Other counsel reports? Moving on to work session requests. Kathleen?
There are no work session requests today.
Okay. And I understand Lindsay is not with us today, so we don't have a policy update. We are now, the council is now going to go into executive session with legal counsel as allowed by RCW 4231101I for one pending litigation for 15 minutes, one pending litigation for 15 minutes, one potential litigation for 10 minutes. That's a total of 40 minutes. And that means we will be back at 12:42 because it's going to take us a little bit of time to move over there. So. Is there action?
Excuse me, Chair. I think that's, would be 12:52.
Oh, my goodness. My, sorry. Some simple math. And there will be, there is not expected to be any action taken after the session. So let's make that 12:53, please, so we get back and forth. See you on the other side.
The council has extended their executive session for 30 more minutes and they will return at 1:23 PM. Hello, the council has extended executive session for another 15 minutes and they will be returning at 1:38 PM.
We have a forum? Don't think so. I think we may have just made it.
It looks like you have a forum now, Chair.
Okay, all right. We're back in council time after executive session. And we, there is no further business today, so we are adjourned. Thank you.